Yeah, she got the Monday.
Yeah.
How are you?
Very good.
I'm doing great. I guess.
Stops down. Hey, John.
I'm down. How are you?
Good.
Good.
You're nice.
Good.
Okay. He's seen him.
All right.
I'm sure.
I'll come get out. You guys can be there. I'm gonna show you. See?
You're over there.
You're good.
I'm there. Charles.
Got this one.
I did.
Bobby, how you doing?
Good.
How you doing?
Right.
And you like?
The only thing. I'm great. I'm saying. I am happy. Okay.
So I think. You know.
I'm on. Oh.
These are.
I will.
You hear me on the phone here?
Yeah.
Tell him. He's just putting in. Really good.
You got it from like. I mean. No. The best. I can make those claims. Well, do you listen to you? Do you get that? And really chill. Let's see. Someone my dad had. I miss you. He's away from him.
Stop rolling.
Very.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah. Just.
Driving this next?
Oh, this is taxi.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Taxi. Yeah. You can notice. Not a lady. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
You've got. That's it.
Yep. I still.
No.
Somebody.
I think when the apples work.
Being.
They're needed. I'm sorry. Okay.
See. Then they just come back.
I'm on.
I don't know. I didn't know. I just like last.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know. I don't know. You're not.
I'm.
Yeah. I'm.
I'm. Probably. I'm. You're like. Oh, man. You're not. Yeah. You're not.
I don't think. I'm that way. I'll be coming off.
Yeah. Boister.
No, gosh, you're.
I didn't. Chill. Oh, jeez.
I'm. I'm fine with it. I don't know what. You know, the. I want to.
Oh, yeah. But I mean. I never.
Um. Yeah. Last. Change. And hello. Move your face. Well, yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think it's.
She.
It was. I just. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like. It was. That didn't mean. Yeah.
Well, actually. I mean. Maybe that.
Yeah. Yeah. Right there. Yeah. Yeah. There's. The part. There's. Down. You can.
I'm. You know. Yeah. You can. Yeah. You.
So.
I'm.
Wait. Yeah. In fact.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. But. You know. Hmm. You. It's. That's it. You want. Oh. No. That's it.
It's. Where you have to. My.
Yeah. I'm. You don't. I told you.
Have you. Marched?
I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great time.
That bad. That bad. I was like. I remember your password.
No. Exactly. She. Well, how you doing? I can't remember my password.
I just changed. I was like. I know. I think like this password.
I know. I'm just like, please. You know, it's okay.
Here's one of those things that Joey locked in there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's like, oh, yeah. So I'm selecting. I'm not a road. Selecting bicycles.
And my. I said. The password is like.
First. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And then it's like, whoa. We'll pick it for you. And so, oh, yeah. Like, I remember that. Okay.
Go again.
I'll just. I'll be getting ready. They lock it. I'm.
I got locked out of state. And then I couldn't remember the. You know, the question, the answer to the question. I remember it, but I didn't remember how I. I did. Whether. So. A D R. So it was. And. I forget. That. So. I want to. I'll. I'll. It's. It's. Love it.
Well.
Welcome to our Wednesday, September twenty fourth Commissioners Meeting. If you'll join me in the pledge and a quick prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. And justice for all. Heavenly Father, we ask for your mercy, guidance, and wisdom during these trying times. We ask for your guiding hand upon us as we make decisions for our county. All these things we ask in your name. Amen. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. We have the Clerk's monthly report for August twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made in second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We also have monthly. Report from weights and measurements through August sixteenth through September fifteenth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. We have informational for Grady's to inform us of their decision for their air permit application referenced above. This is for informational purposes only. We also have one for air permit for Boar's Head. And we have a Duke Energy doing work in area or around properties that the Commissioners own to install equipment and clean up underneath towers along their right of way. These are all informational. And are open to the public for review. Mister Murphy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Wanted to introduce. Wanted to introduce the. The idea of having Henry County apply for an EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant. This would be similar to. Two previous grants that the county has has held and our office manages and operates. If approved, and I don't need a decision today. Unless you want to make a decision. Uh, the grant. Guidelines aren't out yet. We expect the EPA to submit them at any or to release them at any time. But it's funding that allows for phase one assessments of any commercial property in Henry County. The property owner has to be willing to grant access. But it allows us to pay for the phase one environment. And then in some cases, a phase two. Phase one is a historical review of the property. Uh, phase two is an actual physical inspection of the property based on something that is found in the phase one. We have a tremendous success with this tool. Uh, nearly, nearly a million dollars in the last decade. Brought in and leveraged at least a million dollars in private investment in terms of allowing transactions to move forward. I know there was some discussion about the Regional Planning Commission pursuing a grant. I think it makes the most sense for Henry County to do that. We may not get selected, but if we are, we can, you know, potentially have between three and five hundred thousand dollars available to any, any willing commercial property owner in the county. Reason why I'm coming to county government. Um, and it would be the Auditor's Office serving as the, as the, as the fiscal. We try to make that as painless as possible. We could go to another unit of local government. For example, Middletown. But then only properties in Middletown would be eligible. And so what makes the most sense, since Middletown is also in the county. And Newcastle is also in the county. And Spice Land's also in the, you get my point. It, it makes the most sense for the county to serve as the applicant. Would, if you want to make a decision today, or if you want to think about it, that's fine. But I wanted to, to. We're interested, when I say we, the EDC office is interested in pursuing an application, very similar to what we've done in the past. It is a fantastic tool.
Is it time sensitive for you to approve now?
Well.
You don't have the guidelines.
This is a classic hurry up and wait. They will announce the guidelines when they announce the guidelines, and then we'll know when it's due. And so can we wait two weeks? Absolutely. Maybe, maybe we'll have the guidelines, but I, I'm not going to have very much more new information to present to you based on the guidelines. The guidelines are just going to inform how we write the grant.
So did you say you recommend that we do this rather than the E I R P C?
Yes. Yes. And nothing against the regional group, based on conversations on how they're structuring theirs. I think this gives us the best opportunity. It's not a guarantee. We may not even be funded. Uh, the first time we applied for this about eleven years ago, we weren't funded. We tried again. We were funded. And then we, we subsequently got a, a second grant.
So I tend to agree that we're going to end up with, we're likely to end up with more funds going on our own. I would have liked to have spoken with Kenan about it because I know he's invested time and conversation. Have you had any conversation with Kenan?
I had a text conversation with Kenan, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I indicated that I was going to make this recommendation. And he was, he was okay with it.
Okay. Okay. Then I, I make a motion that we. Make a motion, we go forward.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero.
And a, a, a technical question here. Does that authorize the Commissioner's President to sign the application?
My motion includes that recommendation.
So I would have thought.
It was the order to take care of it.
And that'll happen in the middle of the night sometime.
Yeah.
You know.
She's good.
Uh, there is not a match.
I didn't think so. I could, I didn't think there was, based on.
Well, hang on. Previous grants.
Grants. Yeah, based on history, I didn't remember there being a match.
Uh, if there, if there is a match required, we'll come back.
We'll say no.
And maybe the answer is no. I understand that. Previous grants, there, there have not, there has not been a match. But there's a new sheriff in town. New administration. Any questions otherwise?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. See anybody from the chamber? Off. Angela. Ryan. Joe, do you want to speak?
Good evening. I've been working on a, um, update to our long range planning for bridges. And I have a, a copy here to, to hand out so you can take a look at it. It's, it's, it's not put together to meet a particular budget. I'm following the guidelines of what our consultant is telling us to do and in what year. That's what is based on.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the numbers aren't pretty. Down below, I, I took the current balance at the end of August. In Bridge, Q Bridge, and, um, added four hundred thousand dollars a year to come out with, uh, uh, was the, the accumulated total cash at the bottom. About two point eight million in two, twenty thirty one. Against expenses net. Of, uh, almost ten million. And that includes. Four federal aid projects. And the rest are, are, um, local. Then we have a, um, I put in for large culverts. Approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to get these moving. Uh. Brayden had some this year that went for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. And you can figure it's going to go up. Just. I'll go back. Uh, Bridge one fifteen is on here. The one down on four hundred south on the way to the airport. Um. And the others that we've applied and received federal funding for, they're on here also. And then future structures and rehab jobs, uh. Deck repair and overlays, few of those, and superstructure replacement that's on federal aid. Some of those can get pretty expensive. Uh, Bridge one fifteen is still closed. This is a. Um. We have, I've got one bridge on here that we're going to have to look at, Bridge. Two fifty six. It's on Old State Road thirty eight. And the question is, do we replace it? Some of the residents I'm hearing would just as soon do away with it. Yeah. So that, that's, that's one question we're going to have to. I put in two hundred thousand to demolish, and we're going to have to put some turnarounds or something if we do that. There for people to turn around from each direction, but that's, that could help us. And, and it's not in the best of shape, so. It's a, what, sixteen ton, I think now, so. I showed on. And it'll keep going down as years go by. Any questions?
Where's the money coming from?
Well, I. I can, I can, I've been talking about this for years about how, how this, you know, you, you. These bridges are expensive and we got to get a start on them to get somewhere sometime to start getting them replaced. Uh, or repaired. Some of these are repairs to try to extend the life. Deck repairs and overlays are a good, good thing to use because they'll, they'll extend the life for several, several years. We have some that, that, um. Are, are not that old. And they need deck replacements, pre-stressed box beams. And, um, there was a. Some years back, there was a box beam bridge that went over I seventy in Pennsylvania. And one of those beams was bad and dropped on I seventy. So that started a whole thing up about the, when they inspect them, they, they, I mean, they, they lower the rating quite a bit now. They're seeing rust and, and, and where water has got to them and, and boy, they, and cracking. They really, they really lower them. And, and, you know, I can't say it much because I, I put in, you know, probably forty or fifty of them. So. Okay. Thank you.
I don't know whether they say you're welcome or not, Joe, that's. Surveyor.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. There you go.
I started talking about a. Ordinance about, oh, it's been a year ago or so. And it, I was approved to talk to Joel about this, but. I worked with the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. For responsible issuing some of the, um, certification, the verification of the business location is the reason I'm involved. And for all new facility permits and transfers, the A T C requires a state form to be signed by the county surveyor. This form called the county verification of business location confirms the address of low, of businesses that are filing for alcohol. The location compliance is another thing that we do. Uh, the verification process helps the A T V, A T C check that the business location applies with the local zoning laws and other restrictions. This is particularly important for locations outside of city limits. For example, some unincorporated permits are subject to restrictions related to unincorporated areas or special fire districts, which the surveyor can verify. I've done this for thirteen years. Um, at some of the meetings that I've been to with the, uh, County Surveyors Association, um, counties, there's a lot of counties that have charged, charging for this. That's why I'm bringing this ordinance to the, the county. Um, it'll be a hundred dollars per form. Um, we have to go out and verify a lot of times with the time, car, wear and tear, process in the paper on the copiers. It's just getting expensive to do that stuff. We all know that stuff's going up and everything, so that's the reason why I asked Joel to write up an ordinance. Um, he can specify on that, but, um, that's what you got there in front of you. So if anybody's got questions, I'll be glad to answer them or Joel, he may be able to answer it.
So you and I had this conversation probably close to a year ago. I thought it was probably long overdue. I didn't realize until we had the conversation how much your office was involved with this. And you were right, several of the counties do charge for this, uh, service that you provide. Other than illegal things going on with it. I think it was, it's actually long overdue.
How many requests like this each year would you say you would get on average?
I didn't count them. I should have. I'll probably get twenty five, thirty. It's not a big amount, but it's, you know, it's a process of doing it and verifying all this stuff, so.
And obviously, since you drew it up, you're okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. The order says essentially what Steve described, and it's a penalty for the request of sign off and certain visits.
Anything else you want to add?
Oh, unless, are you got any questions? About it.
Any discussion?
I don't, I don't know a lot about it. Joe, did you have any concerns?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve this ordinance. We don't actually have an ordinance number. Debbie, do you?
Uh, is twenty, twenty twenty five dash oh nine dash twenty four dash oh oh two.
Steve, on the version that, that we have, there's a blank fund.
Yes.
You know which fund it.
Yes. Forty. She's got.
Yeah. It's the surveyor's drainage fee, then forty nine nineteen. I typed in on.
Perfect. That works.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to accept this ordinance. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
See Tom Green. Matt.
You have me instead of the sheriff. I'm sorry. I'm back with you today like normal for vehicles because it's still one of my responsibilities. Uh, back in May, we had worked with Joel and we had eight vehicles that were surplus at the time. Uh, we were going to do a bid process. I don't know how the wheels fell off that one, but like some rural cars, they did. Um, of course, which kind of cut us a break because we were able to move some cars around because we lost the Joe Comators truck due to the wind we had back this spring. We have six left, so I reached out to, uh, Fletcher Dodge, who in the past has been our statewide dealer for Dodge vehicles. Sent them the list of the six vehicles we have left. A twenty Charger, two twenty one Durangos, a twelve Tahoe, a fourteen Tahoe, and a twenty Durango. All those vehicles are in excess of one hundred thousand plus miles. They sent back a total bid of thirty two thousand five hundred for the six. So then I asked them, um, what it would look like to purchase, uh, twenty fives. They don't have any available. They can get us, uh, on the order for twenty six and get it here. Apparently, they're already starting to build them. So they gave me a forty two thousand, two hundred forty one dollar quote for a twenty six Durango with thirty two five. It brought the Sheriff's Department owing nine thousand, seven hundred forty one for a twenty twenty six Dodge Durango. If we trade those six vehicles to Fletcher and order one from them.
Where will the nine K come from?
Uh, so we had, I, I don't know the exact numbers, but it was over fifteen thousand dollar insurance check that came in for the Dodge rim that was destroyed, um, by the tree falling on it. So that is there, and I think there's still around twenty thousand in the line item for lit, for new vehicle purchase. But I think we would probably use the insurance money first. Which will more than cover the, the cost. Uh, we won't be asking anybody for funds if that's what you mean. It, we haven't.
If my memory serves me correctly, I think the reason the wheels fell off the other deal was we wound up taking a couple of those vehicles back, and that changed the whole.
Well, I think something went out in the original announcement, and so then they were going to re, we were going to redo it. And it, it just. I have found that. And it, it just, I have found that trying to bid these out for what they're worth is just so much art. Because I know the bids that we were, I was receiving or seeing were nowhere close to even this number with eight cars. Seems like a lot of those places are more like wholesale places that just kind of, hey, you know, they're looking to flip them and make good money, where I think. Fletcher does buy volume, so they do make money off obviously our trade-ins, but they do hundreds and make their money as considering to try to do like few a year and make money, so. But yeah, that, that's what happened. There's, nobody's blaming, it, it was a learning process because I had never dealt with, we, the only dealings I've had is coming for you trading these vehicles in. That was the first time we'd ever tried to do the bid, so nobody's at fault for it. It was, it was definitely a learning process. I was saying the wheels fall off because, like, I wouldn't surprise if the twelve or fourteen Tahoe was losing wheels, so there's over two hundred thousand miles on those guys.
Joel, are you satisfied with the process?
I'm satisfied.
And we have done this in the past with Fletcher as well. And the nice thing is Fletcher will come get the vehicles and deliver the vehicle, so it doesn't require any manpower from the sheriff's department. They send a whole group of people out here and take care of everything at once, so it's, it's pretty handy to have them do it too.
You lost five thousand dollars by not doing it. Fletcher could have bid into thirty-seven-five, we've had these here forever.
Well, but does that have the, the eight vehicles? Because this is six vehicles. If I'm not mistaken, that one would have the eighth vehicle, eight vehicles in it, right?
I remember that, that's why we did.
See that, so. And we're trading in six because we kept two of the Fords that were on that trade-in list right there. So that's probably the price difference, yeah.
That was what I remembered happened, was that there was.
Yeah, so like I said, by them not getting sold, it worked out for us because we lost that vehicle. We took a civil process vehicle and then we, a-actually worked out. Like, like I said, in the end, not, those vehicles not being sold helped us because we were able to recycle two of those vehicles. And didn't have to purchase anything else or, or be short.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You have anything else in share, any questions for us? Or me, I could try to answer if not. I'll get down here. Thank you.
Auditor's office.
The only thing I have is you guys still have the animal control tabled. So just to let you know that you might want to do something like that sometime.
I'm gonna leave that one till next meeting.
Well, that's fine. I just, I know, I just said, I just want to make sure you knew I was still back there, that you didn't forget. I wasn't asking you to do it today. It's not on the agenda, so no, not today. I just wanted to make sure you remembered.
Yes, thank you. Moro Park, you have anything? Okay. Ah, you probably ought to go up there.
So I know that you guys may have known about the, the lift station being commissioned. That has been fixed, has a temporary fix, and we're going to fully fix it probably by the end of next month. And we also have the Cheap Jam coming up this weekend, so if anybody wants to come out to that, should be a good time. But yeah, that's all I really had to report, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in that list, so. Next up for discussion is our October eighth Commissioners Meeting. We have a conflict, I guess. As far as meeting room availability. Open to the pleasure of the rest of this board. What do you want to do?
Should we already say over email what we were thinking?
Council's doing theirs on the seventh at four thirty. I think there was a couple that, I don't know if you guys commented on it or not.
Is it better to keep the same time of day or? My suggestion over email was that Tuesday afternoon.
The other suggestions?
Does that work for Joel?
Yeah, that'll work, I think.
Can we do one o'clock, or would you guys prefer to have it in the morning?
I've got a drainage board at nine. Got engagement from around eleven, eleven-thirty. I can make it work. It'll be one dude.
That's fine with me.
What's that do for you guys' lunch?
Thanks a lot.
What time is your lunch? You can do two, can we do two o'clock?
Matter of me. At this point.
If that works for the auditor, that'll be fine.
I have that in a motion.
The motion to move our October eighth meeting to October the seventh at two P M.
Second.
Made and seconded, move the meeting to the seventh of October at two o'clock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. All we need is a signature on this plan document, is that what this is? Because our renewal just. Skip that, we don't need that. And we have automated Logix renewal on their agreement. The renewal amount is seven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is up from last year from six thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. So it was a slight increase. Do this only every year. Plus someone has questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
She carries three zero. Next up. Ms. Cash and Ms. Madison, Mrs. Madison.
Well, I'm here representing Hope Initiative and Miranda's here representing Hagar's Hope. The original award of opioid money was made to Hope Initiative be, mainly because at that time, that program was not a five oh one C three and was not eligible to receive those dollars. We have now transferred ownership of the Williams House to Hagar's Hope. They are now fully operational, they have their five oh one C three status. So it seems logical to us that we should ask you to convey the remainder of that initial award to their control because they'll be using those dollars and providing you to service ourselves in that area. That's the nature of our request.
So requesting a transfer of the opioid funds?
Balance of the initial award. I think the second award is already set up under Hagar's Hope. It's just the balance of that first award.
Yeah, and I actually would have changed that for a resolution recently, but I missed that one, so yeah, I'm totally fine with it.
No issue anymore with restricted or otherwise, as far as it affects this.
And then to figure out where we pay, what we're gonna actually do with the money before we can determine what's what.
More discussion?
Nope.
You're not able to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been made and seconded to approve the fund transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero.
Thank you for your work, appreciate it.
I do have something under new business. We have our ADA. Item six that we have to get approved. I was told by the H W C engineering who I reached out to get it updated that there is an extension through the state right now because apparently multiple counties are having trouble getting this done in a timely manner. So we have a few extra days, it was supposed to be done by the first of October. There was some language things that needed to be changed. So what I would like to ask the board to do is, because I need to sign this as soon as we get it approved. Joel's gonna look over the changes and so is Joe Copeland because he brought some of the ownership items legally. Who owns it once, because we pay for it and reverting back to that company. If everything is okay, I would ask the board's permission for me to go ahead and sign it once it's approved by Joel and Joe. So if they're okay with it, that be allowed to go ahead and sign it.
Not sure the details of what you're talking about.
We have to have an ADA two hundred and six compliant. If we don't, we lose all of our federal funding.
And so there's some changes that you and Joel are working through?
They're.
Okay.
They're upgrading this and there was a discrepancy on who owned the documents once they were upgraded. And so now they're going to change to where language is being reviewed. I'm gonna have Joel review it to make sure that we own the documents. So I wanted to sign it as soon as possible so we didn't lose our federal funding. So if it was okay with the board, once that is approved and they're okay with it, if you're okay with me going ahead and signing it.
I would have made a motion to approve that.
And I did send both of you copies, so if you do have, I emailed them to you this afternoon, I just got this. So if you guys have other questions afterwards, let me know, we'll work through it. Well, I just wanted to make sure that while we were all here, it was okay to do that. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Don't let me know, and Joe, I just sent it to you too, the H W C engineering thing with the corrections. If you guys are both okay with it, then we'll go from there. Next up, we have. The appointments for the Henry County Community Health Board of Trustees election.
Yeah, I appreciated the opportunity to get to meet with John Madison, Erica Gilman. And ended up also meeting with Brian Ring and Corey Morris and, from the hospital. And my intent in doing that was just talking through a collaborative relationship between the county and the hospital, and I was really encouraged when talking with all of them that they all seemed very open to doing that. And felt that both John and Erica were obviously very intelligent and capable of serving on the board. Well, they are already both community servants and I appreciate it, I appreciate that about both of them. And don't have a, a personal preference then for who sits on the board, so we'd recommend that we go in order as recommended by the hospital and nominate Erica Gilman then to sit on the Board of Trustees at the hospital.
Second.
I have motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up, we have a library board appointment due to the death of. Mr. Grattner, they have recommended a Roxanne Thornburg. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded to approve the appointment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have. Resolution. Approving the plan order of Henry County Plan Commission. I need to read all of this, Joel.
No, it'll key down.
Oh, he's like me reading that crap.
Maybe he likes me better. Uh, this is for the Redevelopment Commission adopting amended the deck, look for a resolution dated March twenty-second, twenty twelve. It's supplemented amended date collectively as amended original deck for a resolution as confirmed by its amending confirmatory resolution dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. Whereas the original resolution, the original confirmatory resolution are here and after collectively referred to as area resolution. What part do I have for you, Joel?
I think you can just explain, I believe this is to create a new TIF area and also to expand the uses in the fifth district for the new, uh, I used to be food packaging manufacturer, it's an Australian-based company.
Should have had that wrote on here, had Corey explained.
I should have given a summary.
If, if you just want to give a quick summary so everyone else knows, because this is for the NEO. Yes, quick, quick.
The fifth whereas. No, the fifth whereas is.
I was on the back page already.
Is the, is the meat and potatoes, it does two things. It, it carves out Lot Four in the, the Hesston subdivision, which is on the northwest corner of Hayes Way and Brooks Drive. So it carves out that specific piece of property into its own TIF allocation area. And then it also provides the opportunity for the Redevelopment Commission to offer some financial assistance to a private company building in the industrial park. That, the financial assistance has a separate approval process. This is the plan amendment process, and so, and this is step three of the plan amendment process. And this specific resolution is only related to the plan commission action. After this, there's a public hearing from the Redevelopment Commission. They'll take final action, and then it comes back to you again for the actual approval of the plan amendment.
Rest of you knew Northwest.
Well, I'd studied that.
Uh, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero nine dash twenty-four, parentheses, zero one two.
I would second that emotion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. I don't see any public, any comment from the public. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Not too bad.
Oh, I was coming, I was coming that way, Debbie, go ahead.
She hasn't said. You want me to try, you want me to say?